Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by the incredible Colin and Julie from our team. What's up you guys?
Hello.
How's it going everyone?
Thrilled to have you here. Let us know where you're coming in, wherever you are in the world in the comments. Today, we're going to be talking about creating three things that help you to attract more customers and potential customers. And that doesn't mean giving away oils or samples. So this is actually something that you can get a little creative with. If you don't feel particularly creative, don't worry. This is actually specifically what I'm going to be talking about today. You don't really need to be creative to get this going. So today, we're going to be talking about creating audio and video based freebies. So if you're somebody who likes to teach and get technical, then this is going to be a really great opportunity for you to just simply turn on a camera and start talking. If that's how you deliver value, if you don't like to make cute flowery things on Canva and you'd rather get to brass tacks in video, we're going to talk about that. And then of course, we'll talk about how you can share audio as well. How many of you are maybe AFT practitioners? Or maybe you do some kind of facilitation or you do spiritual work. Well, you can do audio lead magnets as well. Maybe there's a prayer, or maybe there's a guided meditation, something like this that you can be offering to give away in exchange for someone's information who might be a really great fit for your business, someone who could be a future customer for you. So we are going to be talking about audio and video lead magnets here today. So before we get started, don't be shy, head over into the chat as you're here. Let us know who we are, where you are. And of course, we're going to get started here with the slides in just a second. A quick note before we get started. For those of you who do attend every week, hello, we love you. We are not going to be live next week. Julie and I, as well as Jessica from our team, are going to be at Aroma Sharing prior to convention. So if you're there, please come and see us. We're going to be at booth number eight. But we will have training for you here nonetheless. So there's going to be a live premiere of next week's video on YouTube. You'll get an email about it to make sure that you are on the list to get notified on Monday. And then of course, on Thursday, as usual, an hour before we go live, we'll be sending out the premiere link for that so that you can still get that training. Next week, we're going to be talking about how to get a beautiful custom website. And you're also going to learn about some exclusive convention specials that are going to be launched and running next week, including one really cool opportunity that you have to work with our designers on a package that's half off. If you like the idea of having stuff done for you, you're going to want to make sure you don't miss next week's video. So welcome. We have Phoenix, New York, Oklahoma City, Loudon, Tennessee. I know where that is, Bridget. Bureau Beach, Florida, not too far from you Julie. And yeah, so I'm in New York. Colin, you're up in B.C. You're in Kelowna, right? Or you used to be.
West Kelowna.
West Kelowna. Awesome. Awesome. Hello and welcome. All right. So today, let's go ahead and get into our slides. And then of course, we will pop back into video once we are done with that. All right, guys. Today, we are going to be talking about giveaways that get new customers for your young living business, specifically how to create audio and video lead magnets with Get Oiling. And today, we are going to talk about first lead magnets, what's in them, how to create a great lead magnet, not with Canvas. Sorry, I did not adjust this slide today. We're going to create a lead magnet with Zoom and Get Oiling. We'll talk about how to upload and use your lead magnet and Get Oiling. And of course, we'll get into the live help and Q and A. If you want to, if you're watching this as a replay, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list. So you can join these live calls. We're live on Zoom every Thursday at noon Eastern time. If you'd like more help, if you want one-on-one help on one of these calls, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review and you can sign up for dedicated space on a call just like this one. And if you'd like a hand getting things done, you can go to getoiling.com/conceierge and our team can help you to get the things done that you are looking to get done. And you can learn more about our team there. So first things first, question for you guys. Do you offer an audio or video lead magnet on your website? Does anybody already maybe offer something like this? Do you maybe offer, or do you offer something at all on your website to get leads? Maybe it's a download, maybe a free class? I know Paula offers sewing patterns, which is a very cool thing, right? Awesome. So guys, today we're talking about audio and video lead magnets specifically, but I do want to point out if you are interested in creating a download like Paula has done with her clergy stalls, then you could certainly check out our previous training on creating that. So definitely, definitely consider looking into that if it's something that you're interested in. But today, I think this is going to be of particular interest to you if you maybe want to record a class and then offer that to someone as a freebie, right? All right. So let's talk about what a lead magnet is first, before we get into this. A lead magnet is some kind of valuable information. And that's valuable to the person that we want to be attracting to us, right? Something that's interesting and valuable to them that we're offering for free in exchange for their contact information. And of course, that person, because they've opted in and they've essentially raised their hand and said, I like what you have to say. I think you might be able to help me. They become a potential business lead for you. Having a lead magnet also positions you as a professional. It positions you as a credible authority, as someone who can help people solve problems that matter to them. You're elevating yourself from just another brand partner who has a social media profile and positioning yourself as somebody who is a solution provider that really does a lot to set you apart and to get you more serious leads and customers. This, of course, is something that's offered on your website on a landing page or a page, and it's delivered automatically after they sign up. So an example here, if maybe Jane has a two-minute video training on how to de-stress, she's offering that here at the top of her website. When you click the button, maybe there is a video here. Obviously, this is a cat. I don't know if hers would have a cat. Cats can get you a little stressed out depending on what they're doing. But here you go. This is an example of how you might be able to offer a video-based lead magnet on your website. Let's talk about what's in one. First, it's got to be information that actually helps them, right? We know that the purpose of doing all of this is to hopefully eventually sell something to somebody. But we've got to bite our tongue and not jump the gun on this. We've got to make sure that we are showing up to serve first and to really show that we are there for them to help them before they can actually trust us enough to take our recommendation and purchase something, right? So we need to give them something that helps them to learn something or do something or fix something that they are aware of and a problem that they currently have. The lead magnet is also going to share a little bit of context. So it's going to talk a little bit about who you are, who you help, and then next steps. How they can get what they want with your help. Right? So what this might look like is you are introducing them. Let's just say, for instance, you have an audio lead magnet that is a guided prayer or meditation. And so at the outset, you're going to welcome them and let them know what this is going to do for them and maybe share a tiny bit about how it's helped you or how it's helped others that you work with, your clients, your customers, right? And then you share the information. And then at the end, you say, and by the way, if you are looking for more solutions to whatever, you know, needs to be attached to the problem that you're solving in the first place, right? If you're looking for more ways to manage your stress, I offer free consultations. I offer wellness consults. I offer wellness scans, right? And then you show them where they can go. Does that make sense? So with lead magnets, what we're essentially doing here is we're paying it forward for the people that we know that we want to serve. And we're building a following of people who trust you. Now, in order to do this, we really do have to look at this as a long-term strategy. And if we do that correctly, it does have a big payoff for your brand partner business. Have you ever felt like you are maybe in a drought of people that you might be able to share with? Who's ever felt that way before? Give me a yes in the chat. Have you ever felt like you just, maybe you don't have another person to share with? I don't know, maybe you live in a small town, you've got a small circle of friends, right? So the way that this works is you are gradually pooling up a massive warm market. And you're not going to get to know these people necessarily in exactly the same way that you know your good friends right now. But it will be a trust that will be established between you and these people who follow the things that you say because of the goodwill that you've put out into the world for people like them. And so what you are creating is a massive warm market for whom you're not going to hammer with opportunities to attend a class or buy something because it's on sale at Young Living. But to open up more opportunities, just as you would with your friends as they are right now, to have another conversation with a new person, a new fulfilling conversation and relationship where you might be able to actually help make a meaningful difference in someone's life, right? So that's the point behind all of this. It is a lot of work upfront. Going to be plain about that, you know, putting up a website, putting up a funnel, putting the thought into creating things like audio, video, PDF, et cetera, lead magnets. But the goal here long term is to passively build a larger pool of warm market than you would have ever been able to develop just being belly-to-belly in person without going to network meeting, networking meetings, you know, four times a week. I don't think anybody really wants to do that. I mean, for those blue personalities who really like it, good on you, but most of us don't, right? So let's talk about our order of operations here and how we can go about creating an audio or video lead magnet. So the first thing that we want to do is figure out what the problem is that we're going to help them solve right now. So let me know in the chat. Thinking about how you would want to help someone with audio or video or something that you would provide. What is a problem that you can help solve right now for somebody that you would love to share Young Living with? That you would be able to help them with by making an audio or video that they can consume without you? Let me know in the chat. What does that look like for you? We want to make sure that whatever this problem is that we're solving is something that's relevant, meaning they know it's a problem that they have. And it's something that is actionable. So we're not going to teach them how to heal their thyroid in one video, right? But we can give them a walkthrough of some of the top endocrine disruptors and point out where they may be showing up in their daily routine. Right? That's actionable to help them cultivate awareness so that they can start moving in a new direction, right? Okay, so I'm seeing tips for more energy, a memory health workshop. Currently have a yoga nidra audio. Oh, that's a great idea. So for meditation, deep relaxation, that is an excellent idea for an audio lead magnet. How to meet new people. That's a really good one. That would be fantastic for video, Colette. Sticking with an exercise plan. I love it. I love it. Simplify their home, declutter, homemaking tips and tricks. Lower stress and anxiety with AFT. That's another one that would be really powerful for audio and video both. Fantastic. So we want to figure out what that problem is. And then what you want to do is outline or plan what you'll share. Now, if this is something that you truly know in your heart, it's something that you feel very confident in and well-versed in, then this is something you're going to be, you're going to very easily outline and plan out what it is that you're going to say. But if you wanted to, you could go to write with AI inside of your Good Oiling account and you could ask it to write you a video script. Did you know you could do that? If you plan to use video, make sure that you prepare some slides. If of course you plan to use them, obviously, if you watch any of my trainings, that's my personal preference. I like to use slides. But of course, depending on what you're doing, if you're showing and telling, then it might make a lot more sense for you to be sitting in front of a camera and holding up objects, right? Then we're going to follow the steps in the slide after this one to use Zoom to capture your audio or video recording. Now, you do not have to leave your Get Oiling account to get this done, right? Provided you're going to be, if you have slides already made. But if you are just going to be speaking to the camera or using audio, all you have to do is open your Zoom and record it. And we can get that into your account and Get Oiling very quickly. And then of course, what we'll do finally, once it's done, is we'll connect our lead magnet to a page or to a campaign. So let's first talk about capturing your content with Get Oiling and Zoom. So first things first, we're going to schedule a Zoom meeting and title it with the name of your content. So I've got two examples here. One is a guided meditation and another is a breathing technique, how to de-stress in two minutes. So I've created these two because I'm going to be recording these two different pieces of content. One of these is going to be video, the other is going to be audio. Of course, both of them are going to be recorded with Zoom. So create a meeting. Just like you're going to meet with somebody, but you're going to be showing up on it by yourself. So you're going to open your Zoom meeting, you're going to start it. You are going to share your screen. If you're going to share your screen, turn on your video. If you're creating video where you're speaking to the camera. And what you're going to do is you're going to record it to the cloud, right? So hit record to the cloud and then share, right? Start speaking. Start sharing and showing, presenting however it is that you plan to provide this video content. Easy enough so far, right? We all know how to open a Zoom meeting and you now know how to record to the cloud and start talking, right? Pretty easy so far. So once you're done, you end the Zoom meeting. You're going to go over here, back to your Zoom meetings, and you're going to see this button at the top that says my recordings. Okay, click that. And depending on how long your Zoom meeting was that you had, if it was a 30-minute video, which for a lead magnet, that's a little bit long. But you know, value is value. It's up to you. There's not an exact right or wrong way to do this. But depending on how long that recording is, it might take a little bit to show up. But once it's here, you'll see that you can copy a video into your video library. Right? So if it is a video, so this breathing technique had a de-stress in two minutes. This is a video. So I'm going to hit copy into my video library and that's going to send this video straight over to your Get Oiling video manager. If you would like to download your audio file so that you can use it as a recording that you give away, then you're going to go over here to where it says audio only, and that's going to be an option on any of these. Go to audio only and click download. Okay, we're going to download that to our device. Now, if you have moved it over to video, right? If you click to move over to video, all you have to do is go to your videos and locate your recording. And the reason why we created that Zoom meeting in the first place with the name of your content is because it carries the name of the content over to the file name. So it'll be easier for you to find it than if you just said my meeting or something like that, right? And then finally, if you downloaded an audio file, you just want to go over here to files and then you're going to upload the file that you have downloaded from the video. And you do want to make sure because it is going to come from Zoom as a file and it is going to have some kind of long weird name with recording at the end of it. So just go ahead and upload it and then rename it. Once you've got it inside of Get Oiling, in this case, I'm naming this guided meditation. All right, and that's it. You have your audio or video lead magnet in your system. Now let's talk about how we deliver it, how we get it out there to the world. So we'll talk about how to share your lead magnet. First and simplest option is to take that file and add it directly to a campaign message using the video or file button. Okay, in the message editor. And we can go back and take a look at what this looks like. It is very similar to what you would do for the audio file as you would for taking your PDF that you learned about in a previous training and adding that to a campaign email. But the best option is to create a page that your lead can visit that has your audio or your video embedded along with a call to action for them to take whatever that subsequent step is, right? Maybe in your audio recording of your de-stress yoga nidra, you don't want to put a pitch at the end of it. Well, embed the audio on a page and have a button below where they can be taken to where they can learn more about what you're selling, right? You can position these things together. And of course, this page that you create where you can embed your audio or video is the thing that you would link to in your campaign when you're delivering that lead magnet. Okay, so let's go into a real Good Oiling account and see what it looks like. And then we'll get into some live help and Q and A as well. So please make sure if you've got questions that those are going into the Q and A. And of course, if you would like to talk through an idea that you have, you can put that question in or that request in the Q and A as well, and we can talk through your ideas. So I want to go over here and show you really quick where we have our videos, images and files. That's where we've copied over our guided meditation, which is the one I showed you a screenshot of, as well as our video here with our breathing technique. So I want to show you the two options of embedding this, sharing this with your people. The first is going to be the quickest and the second is going to be the most optimal. So what we'll do here is we're going to go to our campaign, which you have hopefully already created. This is one where we have a three-part guide that we're giving away. Okay, so always in your campaign, you're going to share your freebie and the first email because we want to give it away, right? Right when they ask for it. And so when we say here's your guide, I'm going to say, I'm going to unlink this and say, here's your video. And here I am going to, I've highlighted this text. I'm actually, you know what? I'm not going to do that. I'm going to hit enter twice and we're going to embed the video right here. Now, video isn't going to play for them in their email, but it is going to offer an opportunity for you to send them to a page on your website that you don't have to create where the video will live. So we're going to add video. And we're going to allow to share with link and we're going to select this video. And it's going to go just to the video on the website and we're going to add the email. So now it's here. This is ready to share, right? So if this is how you want to do it, this is something that you could do. For the audio file, you could also go here and in this case, I would hyperlink this. Or actually, I would select it, I would copy it. So that's Ctrl or Command C. Because we are going to have to change this after we put a file in here. So we're going to go to more rich. We're going to go to insert and manage files. And then here is our guided meditation. So I'm going to click that. It has renamed itself. So I'm going to go back in here and paste in the name. And here's your audio. Right? So that's how you would add this directly to this message. Now, the more optimal way to go about doing this would be to create a page. And this would be similar to say like an authority page, if you guys are familiar with that type of page from some of the trainings that I've done. I'm actually curious if that's even in here. No, it's not. So we're just going to create a page. And we're going to use, what would be a good one? This would be a good one. This professional services one. I'm going to click that. Here, we would title whatever it is. Welcome, watch the video below to get started. And I'm going to center this. I'm going to delete this. And then I'm going to go to add video. I'm going to select this video. And I'm going to hit done. And so from here, you do have that opportunity. And this is why it's more optimal. Here, you actually get to send them to a place where you are actually offering an opportunity to connect with you or for them to buy something, right? Because we are giving something away for free, but we don't want to completely hide the fact that we have a business to run, right? So it is nice to have those opportunities to share and that is something that you have the ability to do here on this page. So that's how you embed the video. If you would like to embed the audio, let me delete the video here. And let's go here and go to more rich, insert and manage files. And do you see where there's a little music note here? This is going to insert an audio player. So instead of giving them the file, it's going to give them a place where they can click play. So there's that. Obviously, we'll want to format this a bit so it's nicer, but we'll say press play now to receive your meditation. Right? And of course, again, we can do any amount of modification to this page to make it look however you want it to. But you can embed it right here. But then what you would do is you would save this page and then the link to this page is what you would put right here, right? So instead of linking directly to the file from your campaign message, we're going to send them to a page on your website so that they can not only get the thing that they came for, but also connect to other opportunities to work with you more directly, to purchase from you, et cetera, right? Okay, so that's basically it. It's fairly simple. If you know what you want to say, it's a matter of going in to your Get Oiling and opening up a Zoom meeting that you've titled whatever you want your file name to eventually be. And then you record it. You either move it over to your videos or you download it and then upload it as an audio file. Why are video and audio uploaded separately? It's simply because there are two different ways to interact with the content. So some people want to just have an audio-only file. And so that would be the case for your, you know, your guided meditations and, you know, podcasts and things like that, right? Whereas video, they're different file types, I think, is the main reason in our system why they're separated. But the way that you use them can be quite different as well. The file sizes are also significantly different and video is something that's a bit newer to our platform. And in part because it is such a larger file size ultimately in most cases than say like an audio file. Even if you have a long audio file, it's going to be a lot smaller and a lot less drag on your website and speeds and stuff like that. And say a video will be, will be more similar to like a PDF. Okay, so who would like to come out and workshop any of your ideas for lead magnets? Obviously, it'd be great if it is something that's audio or video based. It doesn't have to be. This is open space for you. If there's something that you would like to work together on, then that is something that we can do here. Just let us know in the Q and A. Adrian says, I have my yoga nidra audio on SoundCloud and embedded from there. Can you review again how I can upload to Get Oiling and embed onto the page instead of SoundCloud? Yeah, absolutely. You don't need SoundCloud when you have Get Oiling. That said, if your, if your content on SoundCloud is discoverable and you've got like some good keywords in place there, it's never a bad idea to have it in more than one place. Just make sure that on SoundCloud, you maybe have the URL to your website so that you can get traffic from SoundCloud to your website, right? But you don't need to use like a paid service or a paid level of SoundCloud or something like that. So what you're going to do is we're going to go to over and under website, we're going to go to videos, images and files. And for your audio file, you're basically just going to take the, it'd be like an MP3 file, I believe, that you would be getting or something similar, an audio file. You're going to upload that right here. So you're going to click files. And then you're going to select your file here from your device. Or you could drag and drop over if it's on your screen here. And we do have, here we go, an audio player right here. This is actually an article in our help center. If you guys ever want to walk through something like that as well. Just a little supplement there. Okay, Cornelia says, I created a PDF download that is connected with an authority page, the walkthrough. Thought now to add buttons to it to either book a free call with me for further information. And the second one with the oils and products that I use in my 13-minute lead magnet video. Cornelia, do you want to come out to chat? We could talk through that. Let me know. Just pop your hand up. Let me know if you are good for that. I'll bring you up. Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so tell me about, what is the, what's the thing that you're promising like on your landing page? What are you offering to your lead?
I have five secrets for more energy and productivity and it's the empath version. So it's five tips about morning routines and so on. But it's a PDF download. And when they click it and they download it, then they get to a thank you page and there it's, there is a video. Or that's the plan, that there's a video and underneath. And one of the points in my download PDF is that I'm using essential oils and what I do with it. So they can purchase it or they can, well, that is one option, or they can also get a free consult with me. At first, yeah, that's, and I think it's almost a little bit too much. I'm not so sure.
I would just, I would separate this. I would separate the essential oils and the consult and maybe put. So. And um maybe put so. In the PDF itself are, do you have any call to action in the PDF or links in the PDF um that lead toward product or toward a call with you?
Hmm, no, not yet. Um, I could do that. I I thought about that too and then I thought it's hmm maybe nicer with the thank you page.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so um I'm just curious where these things would be showing up. So. What I would consider doing, so you've got these five secrets, you mentioned essential oils, but when they are. When they're on the landing page, they don't know about essential oils yet, right?
No.
Okay, so then what I would do is in the video, after they've opted in to get the free thing. Um, which is about, you know, the the energy secrets, right? Uh, that that you would, you know, have a welcome video, encourage them to um. To go ahead and get the download and learn more about what you're doing. And then tell them that basically there's more where that came from. I offer consults, et cetera, right? And then in the campaign. Uh, so offer a call with you maybe on that thank you page. In the campaign, as you're expanding, um, you know, on different topics in the campaign. And sort of dripping out information, that's going to be where you're introducing more about essential oils. Because we want to give them the opportunity to get the download and to see essential oils in context with that problem that you're solving. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm sometimes I think I overload. A little bit and then it gets getting complicated, more complicated. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah, just try to make the strand thin. Uh, and you can, you can make it as long as you want it to. But but we don't want to wind it up with too many things or they're just not going to, they're not going to do anything with it.
Yes, that helps a lot. Thank you so much.
Okay, absolutely. Thanks for coming out. All right, anyone else? Would anyone else like to talk through? Um, any questions or ideas you have? Feel free, you can raise your hand up. Uh, and of course you could ask in the questions and the Q and A or leave a comment here. I'm very interested to hear more about the um, the different lead magnets that you guys have. Uh, maybe already up on your website, if you want some guidance on how you structure those things. Or if you're thinking through sort of what you offer and how you could even make that connect. Like we were just talking with Cornelia about making your lead magnet connect with essential oils. Because it's not always a clear, straight line, right? Uh, we can't jump straight from you got my download, let me tell you about all the oils that I use. Unless what they often, they opted in for is something that has to do with using essential oils, right? And that may not be the person that you're looking for, is somebody who's already searching for things that include essential oils, right? Because that's a person who already has oils and now you're going to have to have the conversation of, well, here's. Here's why yours maybe aren't so good and why you need to have these, right? I'm not saying that you can't work with people like that. Of course, we need to let everybody know um about the benefits of getting the right oils. But um, but it does make a little bit more sense to focus on somebody who has something that they want. Like in the case of Cornelia, your people want more energy. And so she's going to share not just oily tips. But how the people can get more energy, how she keeps her energy levels up. And uh and then, of course, inside of that content, she is going to mention oils. And though, and now we have that captive audience of people who have received this download, who have hopefully read it. And then in the several weeks worth of emails that follow, she can put little pieces of, you know. Here's one of the tips that I talked about in the download. Uh, and here's how I can make sure that I do it every day. And then, you know, she could do that for fourteen days. And all of them are not going to be oily. They shouldn't all be oily unless somebody just signed up for something that was oily. And most non-oily people don't sign up for just oily stuff, right? So little tip here, a little tip there. And then, by the way, lemon oil in my water, right? Who'd have thought? And it's done so much for me. And here's all the things that it can do for your liver and this and that, right? And it smells good and it's good for this, right? That is what that looks like. All right. So I don't want to keep you guys on. You're you're kind of quiet today. I don't want to keep you guys on if you are, uh, if you're good and you feel clear on this. But if uh, yeah, again, open, open floor, if you want to talk through any of your ideas or what you're working on. Uh, and want some feedback on what you're doing. Uh, different question, but different topic. By all means, yes, uh, let's, let me find you. There we go. Come on back. Hey.
How cool. Wonderful. So I asked this uh question in the Facebook group. And I know we have talked, or you have talked in one of the other um office hours about it. I'm, I'm, I'm coming back to giving classes, actually, um in-person classes, at least twice a month. And um I want to, these are really wellness classes where they, I'm not really educating. It's really giving them a good feeling, having them an evening spa's kind of thing. So I will charge for that. So it's an experience to, and I charge for that. Um, and that is something that I could not figure out on the event page. And Greg answered with, I have to create a page and then pay on the page. And then connect it with an automation. My, my, my mind is just um confused. I I knew there is a creative, but I, I had, do you have a quick? Solution for that or can you show that?
Yeah, yeah. So actually, do you, do you have the store? The store is actually one way that you can do this. And um I actually have a video where I demonstrated how to list your events. I think what I did were like live AFT sessions was the example that I used. This, the store is a very easy way to do this, where you create a story listing. And um, and basically you're, you're, all you're doing with the automations is you're creating an automation that RSVPs them for an event. But here's the thing, I are, are you using like the event list on your website to promote?
That's my plan, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. So in that case, yeah, what what you would be doing is you would either be setting up a page, just a dedicated page to take payment. Uh, for a class and then you would use an automation to RSVP them, that you would attach to that page of the point of of uh point of payment. Uh, but uh, but I, I think that it's even easier to just use the store. Uh, because then, then you've got the ability to, you know, just go straight to a a sales event in the store. And and it it lives there all the time, right?
And I can reuse it and put, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it is a little bit of an extra step and I, he's not here, I don't know the way to explain like how, I guess, like the coding or the plugin or something like that. Is different for um, for the events versus pages and and sort of how they take payment and things like that. Uh, but it is a slight difference and it is on our wishlist. It is on our wishlist. It's just not, uh, it's not something that's done just yet. But basically, just what you're going to want to do is, and you could reuse a page for this too, to be fair, if you didn't want to use the store. You're just going to want to go in and um create an automation for each event that RSVPs somebody. So uh, you're going to want to first set up all of your events, right? So all of them exist in your system. Then you're going to go and create an automation for each of the events. And that's going to be RSVP for whatever the, you know, July sixth.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And that you, you add the R if it RSVP action. Um, and then you create the automation, right?
Oh, I did not know that.
Yeah, so, so create all of the events and create the, an automation for each. And then you create a sales page that um signs them up for any of them, right? Um, or you create a, a, what you call it, you create a uh. A store listing and uh and and that could sign them up for any of them. But you're going to want to, um, if you're only promoting one at a time, for instance. You're going to want to um connect this and then repurpose it. But if you're promoting multiple at a time, right? So if people can sign up for, if you have four of them listed on your website, on on your events pages at any point in time. You are going to want to do four events, four automations and just make a copy, but you'll have four pages.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the next month I just um need to, well, adjust it accordingly.
Right. If it's a recurring event, if it's a single monthly event and people can only sign up for this month's event right now. Then you only need one page and you're just going to want to swap out the RSVP.
Mm-hmm. This automation, okay, that, okay, yes.
Okay, does that make a little more sense?
It, it does. Sometimes you just, I know it's so powerful, the system, and sometimes you're just like, what? I can't find a solution right now, but I, perfect. Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, good, good, good. I'm glad that helps. Okay, let me see. Um, Joel says, uh, is there a way to create a recurring event, for instance, if you have weekly Zoom calls at the same time? So we actually do that. Um, and uh, and and what we do uh for that is we have a single landing page. Uh, and a thank you page that we use twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Um, we have, I forgot the name. I don't know if you guys know, uh, the, the create a recurring calendar link thing that you can like plug in. It's like a free tool. Guys, you know what I'm talking about. Greg knows. He showed it to me once. I've used it and we've shared it like once here before. But it's like a free thing where you go and you set up a recurring like ICS file that you can just like plug in and share. Colin light bulb went off. I think you know what I'm talking about. So um, so we, we set that up. And so when somebody signs up on that landing page, they're tagged, in this case for us, with weekly work session. Um, and they are, um, they're sent a confirmation email that's in a campaign, it's one email. Um, and then they are, you know, sent that file so they can add this to their calendar if they want to. Now, what happens is uh is because it's a recurring event and it is in perpetuity, always ongoing, we're not using a campaign. Right? Because when you apply a campaign to somebody, the campaign, as it is applied at the time that it is applied to someone. That is what's going to send to them unless you remove it and reapply it, right? So you can't just um apply a campaign and then add a new thing every week. That's not going to send to the people who are on the campaign already. So if you're going to have a recurring event, you want to send out reminders, things like that. And this is what we do. Um, we use saved replies to save a ton of time. And then we schedule those in advance. So at any point in time, for our weekly calls that we do on Thursdays at noon. And and we actually do two Thursday calls, right? Because we have another platform. We have in a, like a month in advance, our promotional calls to our whole list for them to join this list, right? Uh, and then our reminder calls before we go live and our replay calls after we've been live, right? And so I set those up a month in advance and I manage it all on the Trello board and we're good to go. So the recurring event is you'll be creating a recurring link in Zoom. And you're going to send that Zoom link in that campaign email. But you're also going to be uh putting that into a saved reply that you send weekly. And Joel, I know. That might have gone in circles a little bit. And so if you need clarification, we can walk through setting that up. Just uh let me know, raise your hand. I'll bring you out. We could chat through it. Uh, Colette says, I'm currently making thirty videos for a course I created. Do I use the same procedure you shared today? Yeah, why not? Yeah, absolutely. Um, definitely create the different uh meetings for yourself. Uh, so that you don't wind up with a bunch of weirdly named Zoom video files and you don't know which is which. Uh, so yeah, definitely follow that same uh set of steps and you could do it that way. One hundred percent. Let's say I'd like to make my video on my homepage look better with a background or something. Uh, let me see, Paula. Paula wants to make something look better. Paula's an expert at making things look better. Let's go look. Ooh, see, it always looks so nice. Paula, can I bring you up to chat? Can we, can, can, can we talk today? Can you raise your hand and let me know that that's okay? Awesome. How are you?
I'm doing well, and you?
Good, good. So um, tell me more about what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I have a little GIF on the top there. Um, I wanted to figure out how to put videos on and still have that background. But then if you scroll down a little bit more, I put a full video, uh, just keep scrolling. But um, it was one that has, you know, it's like the, not the um landscape, but the portrait version. And so there it is, right there. Um, and I wanted to put something behind it. And you know, so that it would look better. Or can I just see, it's got that wide thing at the bottom. I'd like to that, that to go away.
Oh, oh, so you're, you're talking about this video itself.
Yeah, yes. I don't really know how to do that.
Okay.
Tried putting a a um, a clear, you know, background on there and stuff like that, but uh.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the challenge with this is, is that the video is shot in portrait. And this is a landscape player. So the, really, there's, there's two ways you could look at doing this. You could download this video and maybe get it into a video editor. And see if there are some ways for you to fool around with that. That is way over my head personally. I don't know how to do that.
Well, actually, I got the background to work on the phone version, but I can't get it to work on the laptop version.
Got you. Yeah, so I think it's that, um, and I don't know, Colin, if this is something that you could speak to. Uh, but yeah, you, you can, please do.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, so what you're, exactly what Ashley's saying, right? Like the video was shot, it looks like with like, with like a, a phone in. Um, portrait mode, but our player, when you're being, when you're viewing it on a desktop or a laptop, will automatically default to wanting it to, to stretch it to a landscape. Mode. When you go to a phone, it's going to, because phones, obviously, you know, are 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 tall devices, they're going to want to render that. Player into, into the portrait mode. So. The, there may be ways that we can tinker around with it, but really the best solution is like what Ashley said, is to either take this video. Re-render it so it's, it's in landscape mode. Uh, that way regardless of all of the, the viewports, it's going to fit. Um, but you'd have to, like she said, you'd have to take it to some video editor and then re-render it. And that could be. I mean, that's why if you ever, if you ever go on to like um. Like on YouTube, sometimes they do it, or I think they do it on like um TikTok or whatever. If someone shoots a video on their cell phone, there's a filter that just kind of like takes the main video. And then it's like duplicates it and blurs it to can give the impression that it's widescreen, even though it's actually not a widescreen video. And that's.
Okay, I actually did take it into Filmora and put a white background on there, but I didn't think maybe I should take it into um Instagram or something like that. And maybe I could uh do it that way.
Totally, yeah. Those filters are already available on those social media platforms. So it may just be a matter of bringing it into Instagram, pushing a whatever filter button that you want, and then it'll spit it back out proper.
Okay. It's a great idea.
Yeah, totally.
And free.
And free and pretty easy because that way you don't have to tinker around with some of those video editing softwares because those are confusing.
Yeah, they are. I know how to do two things in Screenflow.
Yeah.
Nothing else. Awesome. Yeah, thanks for coming out, Paula. And um, I see you've, you've been doing some uh, some rebranding and some work here. And it's absolutely gorgeous. By the way, you guys, if you have not, if you did not know this already. Going to go ahead and shout you out while we're here. We go over to content on the Get Oil and website. Go here to beautiful pages. Paula will teach you how to make your site pretty like hers. She has templates and she teaches too. So thank you, Paula, for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, more questions. Okay, so Joel, I, I think you got it. Okay, cool. Um. Allison says, hopped on late. Are we running a repeat training or pre-recorded training for next week? You're so sharp, you're so smart. It is pre-recorded and next week is about creating a gorgeous website quickly. And uh, a really amazing deal that we have put together. Uh, you do not have to be a new Get Oil and customer for this particular thing. So make sure you check it out, but it will be running, premiering on YouTube at our usual time next week. And of course, we'll be back the week after. Okay, Heather says, I have a campaign that includes a link inside each message with an automation to opt them out of the campaign. But keep them on my general mailing list. If someone clicks it, can I assume it removes them from all future messages in that campaign? Uh, Heather, if your automation that they're clicking removes the campaign that they're in, then yes. Which I, I'm pretty sure that's what you're doing. So you've got, um, I don't remember where I taught this before. Uh, but I've suggested this for like a recurrent call series, right? Uh, where if somebody still wants to receive maybe your weekly emails, but they don't want to get the ones about that call anymore. Then that call is a campaign and you ideally have that person tagged, right? Uh, and so, um, so yeah, if they, if the automation they're clicking removes them from that campaign. Then they will no longer receive those campaign messages, but they should still be able to receive other campaign messages from you. Uh, or of course, any broadcasts that you send out. Charlotte says, I created the consultation pages from the template, but one of the client will receive. Um, the email in the Jane template, don't know how to fix. All right, Charlotte, um, are, are you good to chat? Will you raise your hand for me? I'll bring you out and we can definitely walk through this together. Just let me know. And Colette, so should we record our videos in landscape, not portrait? Uh, yeah, nine, nine times out of ten, unless you're filming for YouTube Shorts or TikTok and that is the only thing that you're filming for. Then yeah, you, you need to be in portrait, uh, because portrait is going to, like Colin said, it's, it's going. Then yeah, you you need to be in portrait, uh because portrait is going to, like Colin said, it's it's going to adjust to different devices, or sorry, landscape. Right, wide, so if you're using your phone, do it like this, there's my dog. Um do it like this, right? Not like this. So um. That will, cause if you're doing this, it's not gonna show up on a um on a desktop screen like Paula's, um but if you're doing it like this, it'll show up anywhere. Okay. All right, Charlotte, you are, okay, cool. Hi.
Hi.
All right, so can you tell me a little bit more about um what we are looking at here?
Okay, so I was following from the wellness or the consult, the wellness consults, and I did the. Um set up everything, all of the different pages that I thought that I needed. And when I ran it as. Um as a client to set a time, what I got back. Was a message that obviously was still from a template. It included your email address and Jane's.
Okay.
Um name on it, so obviously a template didn't change, or I didn't change the right one.
Okay, so this, it seems like that's probably the booking page, so let me, let me see, like the book of wellness consult page. So we're in your account right now.
Right.
And I don't think it's there now, it doesn't look like. Um but what we need here is your um your calendar embed, right? So um do you have Calendly or Acuity or, okay?
Calendly.
Okay, perfect. So what you're gonna do, and I'll just show you in my own Calendly. How we would do this. On that page, you're going to wanna go and get your calls, so I'm gonna turn this one on. This is the one that came with that template. Uh so I'm gonna go to. Uh what is it? Oops, share. And then add to website. Inline embed. Continue. If you have paid Calendly, you can modify the colors if you want.
Um yeah, no, not yet, but.
Yeah, it's totally not necessary, so copy the code. And then you're gonna come over here and. What do we? What do we have?
I think what I was trying to do, I pasted a picture first and then I couldn't figure out how to get that there once I changed it into a background.
Got you, yeah, so the background is already there. So you're good to go there and, oh, there's your. Okay, yeah, so you've got a link there. So what we wanna do in this section right here. I believe we could use, let me delete some of these.
I didn't intend to put the video underneath it.
Okay, yeah.
And I wanted to make the button stand out as a button.
Okay, so what we wanna do. Is, all right, so we have our section here. I'm pretty sure, I think I've done this trick before, where you go to like, pretend like you're adding video.
Yeah.
But go to embed code.
Yeah.
Paste that Calendly embed code, I think it works that way.
Okay, so it's pasting the Jane embed code versus pasting a thirty, like my free set?
Right, you're going to need to log into your Calendly, just as I've done here. And uh and and click the those series of buttons, right? So you're gonna find yours is going to be whatever the name of yours is, but it's gonna look just like this. You're gonna hit share.
Okay.
Add to website, inline embed, and then you're gonna take that code. And then you're going to, and I'm I'm gonna go ahead and and delete what I've put here. Um but yeah, basically, you're you're going to um. Follow those steps that I just did to put your own in here.
Okay, is that, and, okay. But that's not what I had done in that next set below. It was a different code.
Yeah, that's just um. But that's that's just a uh.
My cat, my. A link, okay. I'll follow it again and do it again.
It doesn't look like, yeah, this this isn't the the embed code that you would have gotten from Calendly. Um so yeah, just make sure that you're getting this embed code, and then you just pretend like you're adding a video and uh paste the embed code. Uh right there and and it'll show your calendar booking right here.
Okay, perfect. Now, one other question I have, if I can really quick.
Sure.
That, um. It may seem like so obvious, but it's just not jumping in my brain.
Oh, it's fine.
Where do I put? The um freebie, the like a lead magnet that I've created, either a one-page. Um PDF or uh. Canva presentation.
Yeah, so the Canva presentation, unless you're intending to give it away as like a a file that they can flip through themselves. That's something that you, oh, it is, okay, perfect. So in either case, you're gonna wanna save those as PDF files. And you're gonna wanna add them here to your files here in your Get Oilin'. Right? So um make sure that it is a PDF ideally. Uh and and you're gonna add those here, and then in the campaign that's connected to your landing page or your page, wherever you're offering your free thing. Your campaign is where you're going to gonna be connecting that free thing, just like we talked about today, where you can embed it right in the email. So here's this three ways to be uh exhaustion and feel energized. So if you had a PDF, then actually, it looks like you. You have. Something here.
Started to try to figure out to do things many times.
Got you, okay.
Half-done things.
Sure, sure. So what you would do here is you you would take the file, if you've uploaded your file. And you would go to insert and manage files, and then you would click it and it would show up here as a file name, and you could just change the file name. So we'll say uh click to. Download, right? Uh and then and then you're delivering the PDF via the campaign.
Perfect. Awesome, I'll follow that plan. Awesome, thank you very much.
Yeah, sure thing. Thanks for coming out. Okay. All right, Allison says, where do you get that to that section where you can add files? And then how do you add them to a page or email campaign? I have a bunch of added files, but I'm not sure how they got there. Except for the grow bundles, so um that is, it's a fairly new feature in Get Oilin'. Uh and that is uh it's basically a file manager where you can manage your images, your um. Your your videos and your files of of any kind, so if it's an audio file, PDF, et cetera. So where we go to do that is under website and it's over here under videos, images, files. And that's where you can handle those. So this is just gonna be the images, right? This is just gonna be videos, but the files could be any number of things. So if you're using um. I think uh Colin put the link uh in the chat here just a bit ago about like the the link that is recurring that you share for people who wanna like get on to. Like put your calls on their calendar. Um that's actually a file, right? So you, that's something that would go here in your files. Uh if you are using a PDF, your PDFs would go here. If you're using um audios, audio files would go here if you're sharing. PowerPoints in their original form, like any of that kind of stuff is gonna live under files here. So um adding them to a a page or to an email campaign. Is simply a matter of going to the campaign or the page, wherever it is that you would like for the file to be linked. Uh you are going to click more rich and then you're going to insert or manage files. And then for whatever the file is, you're able to click and add it. So if I wanted to add. Oh, and VCF also, which is kinda cool, uh is another thing you can do. And so that's like uh your your contact card. So you know how in in your contacts, whether you have, you know, an Apple or an Android or whatever. Uh your contact card is a VCF file, so that has your name, has your email address, your phone number and other pertinent data. Um you can actually share that as well, which is a cool thing to put into campaigns, for instance, uh for folks that maybe you're meeting in person. Uh but anyway, you just click it, whatever it is that you wanna add, and it'll go right into your campaign or your page, wherever you have told it to embed. And just make sure that you uh click it. Uh and you edit the link, you know, cause sometimes the link isn't going to be a pretty name, it's not gonna necessarily look good. So I hope that helps, I hope that made sense, and I'm really excited to see you guys uh to uh. Get these things done and start getting more leads from your website. Heather says the automation removes the tag, is that the correct way to do it? Um so Heather, going back to what you were asking earlier, if they're inside of a campaign that's. So in the campaign, they're receiving a series of drip emails. And they don't want to receive those emails from that campaign anymore, the automation should remove the campaign. If you also send broadcast messages out to those same people. Then you're gonna wanna untag them in that same automation. So uh an example would be like, so going back to our our weekly work session emails, for instance, we do have a link in. If you are on our weekly work session list, there is a link in that email that says if you don't wanna receive these emails anymore, click here. But you're still on our list and we can send you other stuff, right? So you're tagged weekly work session, right? You get untagged weekly work session when you click to opt out, you also stop receiving a campaign, right? So I would also remove the tag, uh if you are uh going to be communicating with them in any broadcast fashion in addition to. The um the campaign that they're actually receiving. Cornelia says, I feel like I have so many pages, resources, campaigns that I'm not using or are old or double, quickly said it's a mess. Is there a way to see in the back office if a campaign is actually used or maybe where it's used? Would like to clean up the clutter. Are there tips to maintaining your back office? So that is a really interesting idea that should go into our uh our wishlist of um. You know, what what campaigns are people actively receiving or or something like that, right? You can always see by clicking on a campaign who is on it. And of course, there are ways to filter your search to see recent activity and things like that. What I would do though, because you have a lot, um and a lot of it is gonna be, so maybe for instance, from Grow Workspace. Uh where a lot of their content historically has been for a particular month or a particular year. Uh so in those cases, I might run a filter in my campaigns for. I don't know, the years prior to this one, uh and uh and go through and delete uh that campaign content. Um another thing that you could do as well, just as a practice, is um when you get new. Content, uh you start getting into like an organization system, or you establish sort of like a nomenclature for. Uh what you're using. So if it is something that's intended to be a newsletter. And you could see yourself using the content of that newsletter again, uh maybe when you receive it, it says. Um August twenty twenty-three newsletter, um but you see that the content of it is, you know. Summer newsletter, right? That's something that might be able to be repurposed next year. So in that case, you could create a collection of newsletters, and then you could have summer newsletter. And then maybe a couple of words, keywords, um you know, like Ningsha or other products that might be mentioned in it. Uh if you plan to reuse it. So you know, there there is definitely something to take into account here for how you. How you get it and what you do with it. Once you get it, it's kind of like when you um. When you go and you get new stuff from the store. And like you just made a big shopping haul, maybe you went to like Target, you're one of those people that walks in and oops, I spent four hundred dollars kind of things. Um you have to come home and figure out like a place to put all of that stuff, right? It's kind of the case when you get content with um with Get Oilin' as well, is you wanna be thinking about like, where can I use this in the future? Is this something that serves me in the future? If it's not, I need to really be in a practice of letting go of that once its utility is passed. And you can create reminders for yourself to do things like this. Um I don't know, do you guys have any other tips? Julie, Colin, on on sort of like maintaining content, any any ideas from you guys? I love the collections feature, which is a newer one for us. Uh creating bundles, Cornelia is another way to do this. I've actually seen Greg suggest that. Um like just creating a bundle for yourself, so that you can just see wherever, how everything connects together, even if you're not actually gonna be sharing that as a resource with others. Um okay, Mariness, um how do people manage the content they have? Do they use an Excel spreadsheet? So that is one way to do it. Um I'm a big fan of Trello for this. Uh personally, and keeping um different Trello boards for different purposes. Let me actually, I'll I'll show you an example of one. I've been nerding out on this Trello stuff recently. Um I will show you one that we use for our work sessions, actually the one that we're on right now. So I have a template. I've got the stuff that is in the pipeline or that is ready. Well, this is the pipeline, this is ready. We've got ideas over here. Uh we've got uh ideas for features and then we've got past sessions. And then on these individual cards, I'll have content like. This is literally what we're doing right now, this is so meta. I've got a thumbnail that we'll use on the video. I've got the outline, I've got the actual slides, and then my checklist of what needs to be done, and so that, and so it's saved there. You could create resources like this that maybe connect to things in your Get Oilin' system, and you could just have links to them in your Trello. Uh as well. Um if you have maybe one of these is for a funnel, um you can list out the pages in your Get Oilin' account. Uh and maybe even link to them, and so that you can um see in another place sort of visually where everything connects together. And you've got, this is sort of like a reference uh for the ultimately kind of database that is uh your Get Oilin' account. I love Trello. Glad you guys do too. Um do you have a training on how you can use Trello with Get Oilin', or does Trello have decent ones on YouTube? Allison, there are fantastic Trello trainings all over the internet. Um if you have how to build your online course, uh which is an attractwell course. I use, uh I do, I do an attractwell training in there, or well, sorry, I do a. Project management training in there, uh and I give away a template that I use, but it's for, it's not for ongoing. It's for um like project management and production of a programmer course. Uh but you know, that's that's the only Trello training that we have with, you know, our system. Per se, so if you have that, that's trackwell.com slash online course, all one word. Um it's free, you guys should access it if you wanna learn how to build an online course. Uh and a trackwell is just like Get Oilin', it's just not oily. And uh you don't need a trackwell, you can just take advantage of the trainings, cause we're the same people, we're the same team. So, but yeah, if you wanna just, if you wanna learn specific stuff about Trello, I've learned everything with free YouTube videos. There's lots of them and they're great. Oh, really? I didn't know that. I think Tiffany maybe has a Trello training, I think is being mentioned here. Fantastic, all right, well, there you go. Yep, that's Tiffany. Awesome. Well, good, maybe we could have her out sometime to do a Trello training. With Get Oilin', that would be awesome. All right, well, cool. Thank you guys for all of your great ideas, your, you know, your your presence, your attention. You make us better at what we do, and of course, we're here uh to make growing a business easier and better for you. So thank you for being a part of this, for a part of the community. We will miss you live next week, but make sure that you tune in. Uh and of course, uh if you're going to be there in person, come see us. Uh we certainly can't wait to see you there, and of course, uh till the following week, uh we'll see you guys then. Take care.